...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victoria Heron will give an inspirational reading. She is also a 7th grader at Pecosa Middle. Her favorite subjects are art, forensic science, especially anthropology, and science, specifically biology. Always Believe, written by inspirational poems. Always believe, you have the ability to attain whatever you seek. Within you is every potential you can imagine. Always aim higher than you believe you can reach. So often you'll discover that what your talents are set free. By your imagination, you can achieve any goal. If people offer their help or wisdom as you go through life, accept it gratefully. If you can learn much from those who have gone before you, but never be afraid or hesitant to step off the accepted path and head off in your own direction. If your heart tells you that it is the right way for you, always believe that you will ultimately succeed in whatever you do, and never forget the value of persistence, discipline, and determination. You are meant to be whatever you dream of being. Always believe in yourself. Get to know yourself, what you can do and what you cannot do, for only you can make your life happy. Believe by work, that by working, learning, and achieving, you can reach your goals and be successful. Believe in your own creativity as a means of expressing your true feelings. Believe in appreciating life. Be sure to have fun every day and to enjoy the beauty of the world. Believe in love. Love your friends, your family, yourself, and your life. Believe in your dreams, and your dreams can become a reality.
Okay, thank you very much. That was very nice. Next, we'll go into our student presentations. The student presentation tonight is about the study of forensic science at Coleson Middle School. The students who will be discussing this course include Daniel Champ, who's a 7th grade. Daniel's favorite subject is forensic science, and he enjoys hunting, drawing, and cars. Megan Satrie, who is in 8th grade, her favorite subjects are science and math. Megan's hobbies include volleyball, soccer, drawing, and hanging out with friends. Imagine that in middle school. Tori Hudson, who is in 8th grade, her favorite subjects are science and math, and she enjoys singing, drawing, and guess what, hanging out with friends. Andrew Gerard, also in 8th grade, his favorite subject is civics. He enjoys playing soccer, lifting weights, and playing Xbox 360. Also, Eden Fullingam, and Victoria Heron, who we heard from just a few moments ago, will be joining this group as well. Ms. Biddle?
I'm Carmen Biddle. I'm a teacher at Pecosa Middle School. Introduction to Forensic Science is a new elective this year at the middle school. The class has been very well received, as about 147 7th and 8th grade students will have taken the class by the end of the school year. As the first semester progressed, we encouraged students to listen to the news for any crimes that had been committed, and we discussed them and followed these crimes for as long as they were in the news. This allowed for great classroom discussions, which contributed to the learning cycle as students learned, internalized, applied, and shared again. The students presenting today showed a great interest in the class and are here to share with you some of the highlights. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share what we have learned through Introduction to Forensic Science. And Eden, we'll start with a brief look at some of the timeline of forensic science.
Back in the 1200s, a murder took place in a village in China using a sickle. Every person in the village who owned a sickle had to bring them out and place them in the sun. Eventually, all the flies gathered on one sickle, thus identifying the killer and the murder weapon on a fingerprint. Identifying murderers was almost impossible, until 1977, when the automated fingerprint identification system, AFIS for short, was created. Since then, AFIS has been helping identifying and catching criminals. The most important breakthrough in forensic science history is when we identify a person's DNA. Having access to DNA gave us definite matches to victims and suspects, with more exact results than fingerprinting. Forensic science helps people find, capture, and justify people every day. Being a forensic scientist has always been a dream job for me, and learning about it in school has definitely enhanced my love for criminal justice. In 1904, Edmund Le Cardre formulated his famous principle, "Every contact leaves a trace." This has been proven to be true time and time again, as criminalists evaluate crime scenes for evidence. Next, Tori will tell you about crime scene investigation.
My favorite part of forensic science is the crime scene investigation, because it shows what happens during a crime. While at a crime scene, you have to make sure there are no suspects or hazards that can harm you. You also wear gloves, don't move items, touch things, or take evidence. You should look for forced entry, locations, how to get in and out, blood, evidence, and in case of hurt people, have medical assistance. When you're at a crime scene, sketch pictures of items you find or entries. Next is Daniel for blood.
I'm going to be telling you about blood and blood spatters. Blood is made of 55% plasma, 45% red blood cells, .1% white blood cells, and .17% platelets. There is also four blood types, A, B, AB, and O. AB is the universal recipient, and O is the universal donor. Blood spatters can be determined by height and degrees. They also indicate what weapon was used in a murder. Both blood stains and blood spatters can help determine a person's identity by taking DNA from the blood. Blood is a very important tool in forensic science. Next, you'll hear from Victoria.
Anthropology is my favorite part of forensic science. I love that just a few bones can tell someone so much. Anthropologists have to see the story by looking at a skull or femur to tell gender, age, or race, whether or not they've ever been to a dentist, and using formulas to approximate height. Anthropologists are truly amazing people, because they can tell you all this from a few bones. They're invaluable to any homicide investigation. Next, Andrew will tell you about forensic toxicology.
Toxicology was one of the most interesting topics that I've learned about in forensic science. Toxicology is the study of poisons. Toxicology is the combination of physiology, which is the study of living things, and chemistry, which is the study of the transformation of matter. Toxicology helps investigators find out how a victim became deathly ill or died from a poison. Something you might not know is that your body has small amounts of poison in it right now. These poisons include arsenic, mercury, cyanide, and lead. Fun fact that I learned about in toxicology is that both water and air are toxic to us in large amounts. If you drink too much water, it will dilute your body cells and damages your kidneys, and this can lead to death. Tori is next with forensic entomology.
When a body is found, it is important for detectives to determine the time of death or PMI postmortem interval. This is usually done by taking the core body temperature reading of the body. But if the body has been there for several days, you will be surprised at the method that detectives use to determine the PMI. The detectives will turn to a forensic entomologist, who will use their knowledge of insects to help determine the length of time between death and the body being found. The insect that the entomologist will look for is the blowfly. These insects arrive at the corpse very soon after death and lay eggs. Based upon the blowfly's life cycle and the surrounding temperatures, a forensic entomologist can make a determination as to how long the body has been at the crime scene. Victoria has our conclusion next.
In conclusion, we would like to share a poem entitled "The Toxic Avenger." The work of a forensic scientist is endless and usually done on behalf of others. It is their effort that gives closure to many of the crimes that are committed. The Toxic Avenger. "From the grave, if lips could speak, the person who was, please. You must seek the individual who has my trust, and through deceit and cunning, into the grave did thrust this body, once alive and well. Now silenced by death, who cannot tell, my death was not what all thought then. For poisons brought my life to end. Avenged me now, for you alone can find the truth beneath the stone. Look close, and the clues you will see that tell the tale of what killed me. For you must tell all others now that this was murder, and tell them how. For if no one looks to find what's here, an injustice was done to a life so dear. If now only you could hear my muted pleadings to make once clear, I'd speak as plain as it could be. Since I can't, you must avenge me." Thank you.
Thank you, students. Very well done. Dr. Parrish, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, so we'll move into our student recognitions.
At this time, I'd like to invite Rachel Mahler forward to the podium, please. Rachel is a junior at Pecosa High School and made All-State Chorus at the recent competition. She plans to attend either ODU, CNU, or TNCC for a career in nursing. She takes part in extracurricular activities, such as the Academy of Rock Music, Sound Station, and private vocal lessons. Music has always been a part of her life, and she has taken voice lessons since 1st grade. Please join me in congratulating Rachel on her recent appointment to the All-State Chorus. Next, I'd like to invite Nicholas Taffazoli, please. Nick has been named a National Merit semifinalist by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. He plans to attend the University of Alabama to major in Biology and minor in Psychology. After he graduates from college, he plans to attend medical school. Nick wants to be a psychiatrist. As a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Nick will now compete with other national semifinalists for one of approximately 8,300 scholarships, which are worth more than $34 million. The National Merit Scholarships are awarded in the spring. Please join me in congratulating Nick on being a National Merit semifinalist.
Okay, we'll take a short break, so the board members can come around and meet the students. and reports, and first up will be Mr. Bowen with the financial update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. With the finance update this evening, just have brief news on the budget. As you may know, the House appropriations in the Senate Finance Committee approved their budgets on Sunday. The full House and the full Senate are scheduled to vote on their respective versions of the budget this Thursday. If all goes as planned, we will expect the CAUPTOOL from the Department of Education, which gives us the details on K-12 education. We should expect that sometime by the middle of next week. So until that information comes forward, we will continue working off of the governor's budget. So that's the information we have right now on the budget.
Board, anybody have questions, comments? We will look forward to hearing from you next week.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we'll have the operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, school board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. In the area of operations, we're past the winter break. Things are moving along. And in the area of transportation, twice a year, we do an in-service. The in-service focuses on driver safety and safety issues that assist aides. We completed that since our last meeting. And additionally, we've done our semi-annual student bus evacuation drill. That's all grades, all the way up. Bus drivers are in charge of that, and the school principals and their staff assist us relative to spotting. We have completed that. We do that twice a year. In the area of plan operations, energy savings is something we're constantly looking for. And we are about to engage the services of Troy and Banks. They're an energy bill consultant company at no cost to PCPS. They will analyze our bills going back many years, and any savings that is found will be passed on to us. They will garner a small portion of that, but we're the main benefactor going backwards and forwards. And that's my operations report.
Questions, comments? Thank you, sir. And next up, Dr. Rivia with the instructional update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I don't know about you, but I thought that was a wonderful student presentation and gave great evidence of just the kind of instruction that we have going on in our schools every day, and particularly in this era when we're talking about science and technology and engineering and mathematics, that forensic science really pulls a lot of that in together. So I think I commend you as a school board for approving that, so that we could put that in our program of studies. And I think you can see, if we have over 140 students, we're going to take advantage of that course this year, that that was just a wonderful move to make. Last month, speaking of courses, you approved the program of studies for next year, and that has really kicked off a flurry of activities at our middle and high schools in particular, with students and parents looking through that program of studies to look at the courses that are available. And I'd like to really encourage all of our families and students to carefully consider those courses and those selections. But related to this for next year is also the idea that some students, as they try to fit their courses together for each year, want to participate in summer school. And I'm pleased to say that we do have our summer school information available on our websites. It's on the division website, as well as the middle and the high school websites. There's information about the registration processes and the courses that we offer, as well as the actual registration form. So we have already begun to receive registrations from families, so I'm encouraging families, if you're out there and your students want to take summer school, to please access that information as soon as possible and get that information in. It is a first-come, first-served basis, and you fill out the registration form and bring the check, and we get you on the list. Another instructional activity that's going on as we speak is preparing for the writing SOL test. Most of our standards of learning tests occur in the spring. However, the writing always occurs midwinter, and it's always about this time of year. There's a new wrinkle this year. The Virginia Department of Education, over the past several years, has been moving all of the SOL tests to online tests, which you're aware of. However, the writing test has been the lone standalone paper and pencil test. Well, this will be the last year of that. So not only are our students going to be taking the paper and pencil writing test before we have our next board meeting, they are also going to be participating in a 100%, all 5th, 8th, and 11th graders across the state will be participating in the online field test for the writing SOL. Actual online writing SOL test will begin next year, but will be field testing this year. This is a unique field test, because all of our students will participate in grades 5, 8, and 11. We, as a school division, typically participate in field test activities as asked by the State Department, but not with all of our students. But this was not a "would you like to," this was a mandate from the State Department that we participate. And our teachers have been working with their students to give them opportunities over the last several weeks to use the online writing tool that they will have to use with this field test. And I thought that would be important for you to know about and for our families to know about. So the regular writing test will be the first week of March, and then we're going to do some field tests after that. The field test will not count towards your SOL pass rates in any way, but it will help the state in preparing for the online test for next year. So that's a big change, and we want to make sure that our students have the right preparation. And I think they're going to have plenty of opportunity. They can access that information at school. They can also access the tool at home if they would so desire. And then, that kind of concludes the testing for the time being, but I will say, give you, I guess, a little bait to say that in the future, at a school board meeting, we'll talk more about SOL testing, because as you know, we will have a busy spring season of testing. But for right now, we'll just settle with the writing testing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anything? Dr. Rivia, the state funded all the new technology we'll need to implement, all these programs, right, for the... That was a joke, Dr. Rivia.
No, sir. What the state does provide for us are technology standards, and they have said that beginning next year, we need to have all of our tests done online. And so we, as a school division, with much of your guidance and support, have been putting in place the wireless networks in our schools and the other computers to try to support this really extensive testing program.
Right, and that's one of those unfunded mandates that we've been talking about here for the last few years. It keeps kind of coming into play.
We get some funding, but it really doesn't completely cover all that we need to do.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Sidner, would you take us through the consent agenda, please?
All right, the consent agenda contains the following. A, approval of minutes of January regular meeting and work session enclosed. B, approval of financial reports enclosed. C, personnel action enclosed. And D, authorization to accept and expand funds received from Department of Medical Assistance Support Services to requests enclosed.
Thank you, Ms. Sidner. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Could you call for a vote, please, Ms. McDowell?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next on the agenda is other matters for consideration. And we have a consideration for approval of proclamation for National School Breakfast Week. And what that is, is basically there are studies that show that having breakfast before school is a good thing, and lots of good stuff happens from eating breakfast. You can do your math quicker, and you don't become obese, and all those things. Good stuff, good stuff. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation for National School Breakfast Week?
I move that we approve the proclamation for National School Board Breakfast Week.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any questions, comments about that? Anybody? Okay, could you call for a vote, please, ma'am?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. McDowell, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Dr. Parrish, any communications or other matters?
Yes, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the members of our community who have been engaged in our budget process thus far. I've met with a number of people from the community, and they're providing suggestions about our budget. But most importantly, they are asking for information, so that when they contact our legislators up in Richmond, that they are well informed, as they comment to them about their concerns about not only our budget, but just education.
comment to them about their concerns about not only our budget, but just, uh, education funding throughout the state. So I want to thank them for that because they are taking their time out to provide that support for us and hope, um, that hopefully they will continue to do that. And we do continue to get feedback on our budget. As Mr. Bowen, um, mentioned earlier, we are, um, following the General Assembly very closely and will get some more concrete information as we move into next week. I know many people are following the news from Richmond. Um, we're not quite sure what will happen with the Senate. Um, it could be that this session does go longer, um, but we will watch carefully as they continue, um, the work both in the Senate, the House, and then as they begin to conference on the budget. I do, um, want to again, again, remind the community that I will be putting my proposed budget out, um, on March 20th. Um, and that budget will be based on whatever information I have at the time, which, um, may be the work of the General Assembly, but also, um, may need to be based on the governor's budget if that's all that we have, um, that's concrete at that time. So, um, we will continue to monitor the situation and get information out as we can, but March 20th is our next big budget day and then we'll have a public hearing on, um, that budget on March 27th. And remember, we need to get that budget to the city by April 1st. I also want to take the time, um, this evening to thank you, board members. Um, I'm not even sure you're aware of it, but it is School Board Appreciation Month. Um, and we do truly appreciate the work that you do on behalf of our school system, um, whether it's coming to meetings or being out in the community and, um, being willing to, um, work with community members and answer questions as you get them and attending numerous events. So, um, it is, um, I know, uh, a position that takes quite a bit of your time and I do appreciate the work that you do and know that our, our staff and teachers and students do as well. And simultaneously, it is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week around this time. So, um, a big appreciation to Mrs. McDowell for all the work that she does, um, for the school board. Um, thank you. And I hope, um, everybody has a good remainder of the week.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Kelly?
Okay. Um, our February, March for our schools is very busy, very, very busy. Um, at the primary school, two students per class who showed exemplary manners and kindness toward others got to have a fill your bucket lunch with Ms. Butler. And about 100 grandparents and their second graders got to attend the annual second grade grandparents social, February 7th, where everyone enjoyed reading, dancing, stacking cups and playing bingo. The donations from that event went to the American Heart Association. February 9th was the 100th day of school for the primary school. So in the math classes, students participated in counting to 100, doing projects with 100 items, making chains of 100 and many other activities. Second graders also participated in jump rope for the heart day, February 16th. The students jumped to raise money for the American Heart Association and successfully raised over $2,000. At the elementary school, um, SCA representatives and officers are taking a field trip to Richmond for SCA Day the Fer, the 28th to visit the General Assembly. And they also are celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday, March 2nd, with cake for all the students and staff. At the middle school, um, students are doing hoops for heart and they are currently taking pledges for the American Heart Association, Association, if anybody wants to donate, just saying. And, um, the spring book fair begins, um, this coming Thursday and will run until March 5th. The spring jewelry fund kicks off Monday, February 27th. So those of you who are looking to buy Mother's Day presents, there's another good chance to do that. Um, and the library is hosting Dr. Seuss's birthday dance Friday, March 2nd. Eighth graders will take their writing SOL March 6th and 8th. And the sixth and seventh graders are having a math magic show Monday, March 12th. Sixth graders are taking a field trip to Jefferson Labs, March 14th for pie day. And there is an art show taking place in the cafeteria, Thursday, March 15th, from 6:30 to 7:30. At the high school, we want to congratulate the swim team and wrestling team for their performances at state championship. And the Jefferson High School was named one of the top six schools in the Hampton Roads area by Hampton Roads Magazine. Um, juniors will be taking the SOL writing tests, March 6th and 8th, and then again, March 22nd and 26th. And the student faculty basketball game will be March 12th at 6:30 PM for, as a PTA fundraiser. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Hux?
Thank you.
Dr. Parrish, the best wishes on your surgery. So you and James will be in our prayers and thoughts.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Um, I'm wearing my shirt since I'm on the New Horizons Board, um, to show that this is their brand new mascot. They are the Nighthawks. And, um, wanted to share a little bit about that meeting that was January the 24th. Three students visited, um, one from the robotics program, the culinary arts and the firefighter ENT. That was really neat. The guy, um, from the robotics brought his robot and we got to see that in action. That was really great. Um, so there's great things happening in New Horizons and I think it's wonderful that our students are able to, to go there too. I also wanted to bring up the Youth Career Expo because that's going to be March 6th, that's going to be before we meet again. And that's going to be held from 8 until 3 at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. And this is for youth ages 17 to 21, where 180 vendors from public, private and governmental sectors, um, success workshops, and there's interview, training and role-playing, employment and internship opportunities. And workplace readiness skills will all be covered there, so. Band fruit's on sale, strawberries now, the signs are up, so buy band fruit. I know I put them up. And I just wanted to say, um, there's a lot of wonderful teachers and bus drivers and, um, that are retiring as we've approved tonight. And I just want to thank them for their commitment to our schools, to our schools. And, um, let them know that we're going to miss them, but I hope that they'll enjoy their retirement at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Diggs?
Thank you. Um, we had a couple updates for you. We had a, uh, the Jefferson Education Foundation, uh, meeting last month and I just wanted to point out a couple of the things that they're doing. I can't say enough of how much they're doing to support our schools and how much the community is doing through the fundraising that they do. Um, just some of the quick items, um, and I'll send out the full minutes to the, to the board so you can see this, but, uh, on the brick sales, you know, they've, they organized and have head up the, uh, the brick memory walkway at the high school. Um, to date, they've, uh, just a little over 19,000 has, has come in through the brick sales. And, um, they're looking at this year for their, uh, projected disbursements, uh, their goal is, uh, 45,000 to be given to the schools for this year. They've already started that, uh, just recently. If you saw, it was in the paper and also I'm sure, uh, in some of our updates, but they had 10 grants going out to, uh, different areas of the schools, uh, for more than 6,000. And they're just doing a, a great job. And it's, they're doing a great job of, uh, raising the support, but it's really the community that's also coming along with them and raising the funds that, that are being given to the students. And I just, uh, wanted to keep you all up to date on what's going on with that. Uh, the second item, I wanted just to share a little, uh, a personal note. Yesterday, I was up at, uh, James Madison University, uh, with the, uh, the freshman class coming in. My daughter is, uh, attending there. We were up there to hear, uh, some things about the school and some of the welcoming. And they had the 4,000 students coming into the class and, uh, two students, um, that were currently at JMU spoke to the, to the incoming freshman class. And, uh, one of them was a former Jefferson High School student. He was selected, uh, because of his academic and speaking abilities and did just a fantastic job. And it was, uh, very encouraging to hear his name from Jefferson High School. And, uh, I thought that was a, a really neat thing out of, out of the 15,000 students that they have up there, or excuse me, 20,000 students to come and address the incoming class, we had one of our own speaking to us. So that was, just wanted to pass that on to you.
Thank you. Mr. Melton?
Oh, I enjoyed the inspirational reading tonight. I caught on to a couple key words. She used the words persistence, discipline and determination. And I think that has a lot to do with, uh, how we should learn is showing up and act interested. So last Thursday night, I showed up at New Horizons and I was very interested at their open house for Career and Technical Education Month. And it was a very rainy night and the students were very enthusiastic, I will tell you that. And, uh, we had a good time there. Uh, also attended the January 18th Career and Technical Ed Advisory Committee in Richmond. And of course, uh, our colleagues across the, uh, the state are concerned about, uh, retirements in career and tech ed and being able to replace those teachers. So be thinking about our career and tech ed folks for the career and tech ed month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to commend Mrs. McDowell and thank her for everything she does in, in keeping us straight. And, uh, the second thing I have, everybody else has been so eloquent in their comments, but I'd like to know how old Dr. Seuss is.
I know he is.
We're celebrating his birthday, I want to know if I'm older than him.
He is much older than you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, I'll wrap things up. I attended, uh, uh, the orientation for new students at the high school and the middle school. Mr. Pirelli, Mr. Wright, thank you so much for, uh, having your staff put that together for us. Very informative, um, uh, helped ease some of that transition angst that these kids have. So thank y'all very much for that. Uh, Ms. McDowell, certainly on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for all of your work. Um, I know sometimes you kind of have to point me in the right direction and, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I also attended, uh, another Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, uh, with Ms. Feltman. And, um, just again, I was just blown away at, at what these two ladies did. They're energetic, creative, uh, they're taking things out of other people's trashcans. They go, oh, they're throwing this away, I can use this. And they are. And it's phenomenal. Um, just, I, I was just blown away. And so, so, not just out of the trash, they do buy new stuff. And there's no food on it or anything like that. But, uh, after, after the presentation, I went over to, um, Ms. Feltman and I looked at her and I said, you have an amazing staff, don't you? And she goes, yes, I do. And she really does. I'm just constantly amazed at, uh, at what they're doing here in special education programs. So thank y'all so much for that. And, um, with that, I'm going to close, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to also mention, Mr. Diggs, that, uh, the Jefferson Education Foundation is having a fundraiser, which is going to be held March 3rd. Uh, you can get tickets at the PEF website, which is P E F V A dot org. And I'm sure they would love to have you and we could certainly use that support. Um, and we will go into a work session after this and we will also have a closed meeting as well to discuss some personnel issues. So with that, I will, I'm sorry, Ms. McDowell, do we have any material for board review?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will adjourn and go into work session. Thank you.